Good evening, this is Enid Lapelis. Today is May 24th and the time is 8:00 p.m. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice, this meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting as follows. Town council members designate staff, invited presenters, and members of the press may attend in person or remotely. Public access to this meeting is limited. Joining this meeting as follows. One, a limited number of in-person public attendees, based upon the reduced capacity of the meeting room pursuant to the Governor's executive orders. Any member of the public wishing to attend in person, email meetings@monroct.org at least 24 hours in advance. All members of the public may attend remotely as follows via computer, tablet, or smartphone at this link via phone. Please refer to further information provided at the end of this agenda. Okay? Allow me to take a roll call. So Jen?
President. Maggie LaRie, present.
Jason Mauer.
Jason Mauer, present.
DeeDee Martin. DeeDee Martin, present.
Sean O'Rourke.
Sean O'Rourke, present.
Tony Scott.
Tony Scott.
Thank you. Jonathan Formicella.
Jonathan Formicella, present.
Kerry Rooney will be absent tonight. Kevin Reed is remote, and myself, Enid Lapelis. So, uh, get a vote for voting. Okay.
Kevin, you there, right?
Objections to...
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so I can keep on going. Are there any objections from me passing the consent calendar as presented?
No.
I hereby pass the consent calendar as presented. Going on to Communications. I don't see any public participation. I'm skipping one page.
Chair, could we inquire for those online?
Communications.
All set.
Madam Chair, could we inquire for those online for public participation?
We're actually...
Sure.
Before we get to public participation...
Sorry, you didn't hear patients yet. Sorry, go ahead.
The page had skips, that's why. Okay. So for Communications, I hereby ask that Communications A through L be referenced in the minutes of the meeting. Okay? Now for, um, now we have any public participation? Don't see anybody, don't hear anybody?
Anyone online? Please remember unmute yourself if you want to indicate a desire to speak.
Okay. So going on to Appointments. Resolution 20-57 to consider an act upon a resolution approving the appointment of Nikki Lito, Republican of 528 Moose Hill Road, to the Youth Commission for a term ending October 12, 2021. Mr. O'Rourke?
I think Kelly said he'd be doing that. Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Town Council accept and adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-57, resolve that the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the First Selectman's appointment of Nikki Lito, 58 Moose Hill Road, to the Youth Commission for a term ending October 12, 2021.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
Jason Mauer, second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chair, Mrs. Lito has lived in Monroe her entire life. She has served on the Board of Health and is Vice President of Monroe Elementary School PTO for two years. Nikki has three daughters and has involved in all three stages of Monroe schools and the experience will be a great asset to the commission. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Tracy Husek.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair, I just have one question for our selectmen. I know the Youth Commission is a little bit different in that certain roles have to be fulfilled. So I'll ask the question now for both of these. Do we have all of those roles currently fulfilled on the Youth Commission?
They are not, however, we have openings that are unencumbered by any other special provisions as well.
Okay, so there are still vacancies even after these two positions, and those vacancies would allow for appointments to fit those.
Correct. Those vacancies would end up having to be filled by someone meeting one of those criteria.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion? Otherwise, we're going to vote. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
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 So this passes eight to zero. Okay, going on to Resolution 21-58, to consider an act upon a resolution approving the appointment of Liz Moretti, of 515 Wheeler Road, to the Youth Commission for a term ending October 12, 2021.
Madam Chair, I have a motion. I move that the Town Council accept and adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-58, resolve that Monroe Town Council hereby approves the First Selectman's appointment of what is Moretti, of 515 Wheeler Road, to the Youth Commission with a term ending October 12, 2021.
Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Thank you, Madam.
Formicella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Liz Moretti is a 12-year resident in Monroe. She has two young daughters and has been very active in the Youth Commission. Was Vice President of the Fawn Hollow Elementary School PTO. Liz is enthusiastic to be ready, given back to the community by serving on the Youth Commission. This appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Elena Weiser.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Maggie LaRie?
I just wanted to point out that, and thank you for putting an unaffiliate on the board. I think it's...
Welcome.
I think Nikki and Liz are going to do a great job on the Youth Commission.
The vacancy committee, we interviewed both of them. We were very impressed by both of them.
Yep.
Okay, and so that's discussion. On to a vote. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
So this passes eight to zero also. Onto action items. Kevin Reed, Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually trying to get the email that I wanted to share with you, which was part of our agenda tonight. So, we did meet tonight. We met at 7:15 and we went over the Still Kicking, Big City Horns Performing Artist Engagement Agreement, the STEEP Grant Agreement, funds received by FEMA, which actually was four parts for us, but it will be a motion per tonight, and Mr. Kellogg can explain those, the public health nurse job description, and the Edith Wheeler Memorial Trust Policy and Procedure Agreement. So we're more than happy to talk about those, but they all reached consensus to move to council.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? On the mission? Otherwise, going on, so we don't have to have a vote on that, it's just an action item. Going on to, anything about Park and Rec? Thank you. So First Selectman's update?
Sorry, I, uh, Jonathan's passing them down right now. So, the COVID update for this meeting is that our case rate has dropped now to just over one new case per day, which again continues to be very encouraging. We continue to offer vaccination clinics for adults over age 18 and over. We did run a clinic for 12 and older in coordination with the school district. That was, that was based on having some, finding an ability to utilize the Pfizer vaccine and a very specific clinic. So that is something we're not necessarily planning on continuing except for the second dose when that comes up, but we are going to continue to have Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson available. So adults 18 and over on Wednesdays, appointments are still available through VAMs, but we are not requiring that. Walk-ins will be reduced now from 9:00 a.m. till noon. That's simply just based upon the demand, which is diminishing considerably, first doses. So we're going to be starting to consolidate some of the hours. We will have a drive-through test clinic on Wednesday at Stevenson Firehouse again. This will be the last scheduled drive-through. The last several that we've conducted all have had less than 20 people. In fact, the last one I think had, might have just barely gotten above 10. So the demand throughout the state has gone down for testing. It is available still at both urgent care centers in town, so there is the ability for residents to get tested. And obviously with all these things, we always change as conditions change. So if there is a need, we could certainly ramp this back up if there is a sudden need for increased testing. But that will be our last scheduled one at this point. I think everyone is well aware of the Governor's new executive orders lifting all the remaining business restrictions and various state rules regarding the sector rules. Everyone knows, I think, that masks are not required outdoors. Unvaccinated individuals must continue to wear them indoors, and there are certain facilities that require universal masking per the executive order, which includes things like healthcare facilities, our schools, childcare facilities, et cetera. Individual businesses may choose to require universal masking within their establishment. We've gotten a couple of questions on this from the business community, but I think everyone's on the same page at this point. And as in regards to meetings in Town Hall, I will be meeting with the emergency management team tomorrow to kind of confirm our direction here, but the, there is an executive order that goes through the end of June that allows us to still continue fully remote meetings as well as hybrid meetings. In other words, the ability to restrict the public in terms of in-person meetings. While the, you know, the chairs will still have some discretion in this regard, my anticipation is that we'll be able to provide the chairs with greater flexibility as well as the public with greater flexibility in that, given that there probably will be greater capacity for in-person attendance since that capacity restrictions have been lifted throughout the business community and all the other sector rules. So we will be confirming that, but I guess the point is, when we next meet, I would anticipate that it will be very likely that you won't see any barrier tape on any of the seats that it'll be available for anyone who wants to attend. Restaurant Week will be returning. I know this is usually done in October, but I think the Economic Development Commission really wanted to get on top of this with an anticipation of the restrictions lifting. So they are hosting a Restaurant Week in June, June 21 through 27, and they are actively engaged in promotional materials and advertising and working with our restaurants to get them involved, as they always do. And last but not least, the Neighborhood Assistance Act is back again. It's that time of year, so I've asked groups for their applications, and as always, the council will have to conduct a public hearing, which I anticipate asking the council to do at your June 14 meeting, so that you can have the required public hearing and then act on those applications after that. And that's my report tonight. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
Ask a question. Mr. Selectman, Neighborhood Assistance Act?
Yes.
Well, if anybody got any money from that?
They have. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't have all the details, but I know that, I don't know if all of the out, the nonprofits had. I know that Food Pantry, I'm almost certain, got...
They did.
Yes, that, and there's one other that's...
I think Conservation.
Can't think of it. I mean, it is a very, I'm sorry?
Didn't the Conservation Commission get...
They might have gotten something, but I don't know if they got everything they were looking for. The, you know, the challenge with this is, and I tell the applicants at the time, but it's still, you know, it's still a big, the window that the state provides from the moment they say these are the programs are approved until the business having to get that tax form in is a pretty tight window. So the organizations have to kind of be, you know, kind of...
Pre-planned.
Fostering that relationship and then hoping that everything kind of comes together. It's good when the business, I don't want to say, the business is going to donate regardless, and I think that has happened in one case, and then after the fact, they can realize, oh, I can get a, you know, a tax break on this. They try to make sure that that's known as well, but yeah, it has, there definitely has been, or has not helped. Not all of them. I know there's some that haven't gotten funds or they haven't gotten everything they wanted, but there has been some...
Good.
Definitely some success.
Any else of the Selectmen?
Madam Chair?
Uh huh.
Since Mr. Rooney is not here, do we have an update on the EMS building?
I believe he's called a meeting for this week, and I think that's to finalize everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mauer?
Madam Chair, thank you. Mr. First Selectman, considering a large number of events that have transpired nationally, but also with, in our state and even within our town, I wanted to ask for your assistance in speaking with our town attorney as well as our possibly HR department about the ability to provide diversity training and de-escalation training, not only as the police are doing, which they have already started that there, but also just to our town officials, both elected and hired. I think it's something that we could all benefit from, and I would like to, the ability for you to look into that as to what that process would entail. I think, like I said, I think it's something that could benefit both our town officials elected and hired to be able to go through those trainings as well. Also, I would ask that if you could ask our town attorney the process and procedure for council to join in with the state of Connecticut in the declaration of racism and racial inequality being a public health crisis.
I will certainly relay the latter to the, to the town attorney. In regards to the former, the diversity training concept, that's something I've actually already discussed with our HR director. As it turned out, Lauren Ryans, our library director, actually had some, some, I guess, leads you'll say, if you will, from some organizations that were doing similar training that Craig was actually getting from her to kind of continue that because I think he had, she had a little bit more information just from other sources already. So he's already looking into that. And I certainly have no issue, you know, it was going to be for staff, but I have no issue extending that to, you know, other town officials, elected, appointed.
Thank you very much, and it's, it's great to hear that that's something that has already been discussed and is working towards. I do feel that as a town, we've, in the state, we've tended to be towards the forefront of trying, as, as things are mandated, making sure we do them, but we can also make sure that we are in the forefront of, even before things are mandated, making sure that we are ahead of the curve.
Anything else going on? There's no unfinished business, so going to new business. A, acceptance of the following donation. So, Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that we accept the following donation, in-kind donation of approximately $6,500 KN95 masks from the United Way for Community and Social Services.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Martin. Discussion?
Just to clarify, that's the quantity of masks, not the dollar amount?
Right.
But that's okay. I, I...
I stand corrected. That's in-kind donation of approximately $6,500 KN95 masks from the United Way for the Community and Social Services.
Okay, so Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Uh, thank you. So, our thanks to the United Way. They, they had a large quantity of masks available, and they were providing to various organizations that they work with already, and they surprised us one day with the delivery of these masks. So they're, they'll be stockpiled for, you know, various uses.
Okay, any other discussion? So motion, all in favor of this motion?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Pet.
Pet.
Tony? Passes eight to zero. Going to be Resolution 21-59, to consider an act upon the resolution regarding STEEP Grant Agreement. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that we accept the following resolution. Resolution number 21-56, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the performing artist agreement and any associated documents by and between Still Kicking slash the Big City Horns for their 2021 concert series at Wolf Park. Be it further resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg is further authorized to amend this agreement as may be necessary for and limited to the rescheduling of performance dates.
Okay. That, that...
I believe, wait. That resolution was passed on the consent calendar.
You're doing 21-59, am I correct?
What did I do here?
You did the Still Kicking.
This is a STEEP grant.
Excuse me.
So I believe it's a STEEP grant.
My apologies.
Am I, I'm correct, correct?
I needed to warm up.
Okay.
Withdrawn?
I'm warm now.
Withdrawn?
I thought it was me with mask on, drawn.
I move that we adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-59, resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, the First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement and any associated documents by and between the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection for Small Town Economic Assistance Program, STEEP, grant for the Public Safety Communications Project.
Okay, do you hear a second to this?
Seconded.
Seconded by?
Jason Mauer.
Mauer.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I just want to clarify for the record, Councilman O'Rourke, do you withdraw your earlier motion?
I do.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Okay, discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You'll recall the, that we were awarded a grant, just over $128,000, through the Small Town Economic Assistance Program, or STEEP. The, the council passed Resolution 21-34 at your, at one of your March meetings. That was one of the pieces of documentation that was kind of in the next phase of the state's process in moving these STEEP grants forward. They have, having received everything now, they've issued their, the final agreement for the project. As is typical for this and all state grant projects, there is an abundance of addendums and, and other prior executive orders of the state that have to be acknowledged in the agreement. So while the agreement is relatively short, four pages, you do have a lot of attachments before you. Those all have been approved, reviewed and approved by the town attorney, who has, you have his letter of opinion as well. And again, this, this grant is for the Public Safety Communications Project, which is largely complete. Unlike prior STEEP grants, this was in the round of STEEP grants that was subject to special COVID rules, which allowed towns to apply for projects that were already underway. So you will see that this agreement does contain that provision. So we will, upon executing this agreement, will appeal the act fairly quickly in moving this process forward towards getting the $128,000 towards this project.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing no one, so we're voting on this motion. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Passes eight, passes eight to zero. D, Resolution 21-60, to consider an act upon a resolution to approve an inter-fund transfer for fiscal 2020-2021. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move that we adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-60, to approve an inter-fund transfer for the year 2020 through 2021. Proposed inter-fund transfer. Read all of that.
I think you can just go by the description, not the number.
Okay. Description, to transfer 141,736.55 cents from the general fund to the capital reserve fund. This transfer will be funded with unbudgeted revenue received from FEMA in year 21 for reimbursement of DPW expenditures incurred during Superstorm Sandy in 2012. The purpose of this transfer is to fund certain capital expenditures included in the year 21 and year, fiscal year 2022 capital budgets.
Any discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Madam Chair, seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seconded by?
Aye.
Mr. Formicella. Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
So as I've kind of outlined in my, in my memo to council, I'm sure, I'm sure you're all aware that the town incurred significant expenses back in 2012 in the response to Superstorm Sandy. Many of those expenses were eligible for partial reimbursement through FEMA, their disaster relief program, which reimburses 75% of approved expenses. The town did receive a small reimbursement several years ago. However, some time ago, it came to my attention that there was a larger reimbursement request that had still been outstanding with FEMA. I want to thank the diligence of our emergency management director, Keith White, who brought it to my attention, along with Public Works. Deputy Director Public Works, Bill Phillips, did an extensive amount of work on this, and as well as Deputy Finance Director Heidi Mead. So they were able to work with FEMA, which I must say, they were, FEMA was helpful during the process in terms of allowing us to resubmit documents that they determined they still needed and/or we believed we had submitted, but they needed us to resubmit. Very, very time-consuming, very involved, a lot of time waiting for them to get back to us and go back and forth. However, I'm glad to say that they did approve that submission, and the town recently received just under $142,000 from FEMA, which is, is the complete 75% reimbursement of all the outstanding Public Works expenses that we identified. So that, that obviously is good news. The, bless you, would automatically placed in the town's general fund for obvious reasons. The operating expenses from 2012 are already paid. That was fully closed out. We certainly did not have any, we did not have any certainty that this would be, you know, the funds would be received, so they weren't included in the operating budget. But in looking at certain items that were in our capital budget, there are a few smaller projects that, you know, we normally would not fund through the bonding process due to their, the nature of them being small projects. They were listed under bonding, and they could be funded through special appropriations. They would benefit the Public Works Department as well, where kind of these expenses came from, and it would eliminate the need to bond and borrow for the smaller efforts. So the first resolution that you're considering tonight is a simple resolution to transfer the funds from the general fund into the capital reserve fund, which is a process that's normally done in the budget process. Normally, there's an appropriation in the operating budget to capital reserve for those projects that are funded in our capital reserve. So this would put those funds in the capital reserve, and then there are three more resolutions on your agenda for this evening that, one at a time, would make special appropriations for three small projects or three smaller projects. One is the generator at Stevenson Fire 2. One is the towable boom lift shared between Board of Ed and the town, and one is the roll-off truck retrofit. These are all projects that are approved capital projects in either the current or next year's fiscal year, and it would allow us to move on these projects immediately and again, not bond for relatively smaller projects. This was brought before the Board of Finance, and they unanimously approved it at their last meeting as well. All four items. I know you're just currently voting on the first one, but they, they did review and approve all four of these resolutions as well.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Selectman, $16,700 would be left over from, after these projects. What would be the plan for that?
So I think, I think in discussing it with finance, the thought process would, that would, it could just remain in the capital reserve fund. It would not be committed to anything, so funds would still have to be committed to be utilized from there, but it would just be in the capital reserve for any other things that we wanted to fund. I mean, there's other projects in fiscal '22 that are in there. There are funds in there to cover that already, but the capital reserve fund, it's not uncommon. Sometimes you have projects that aren't quite done, or they, they don't get done, so money kind of comes in and out, and usually every, in every operating budget, they kind of true that up. That's kind of a process there. So if it wasn't used for something else, it could either be taken out, put back in the undesignated fund balance, or it would just be left over so next budget cycle, have less that you'd have to, you know, trans-appropriate in the budget into capital reserve.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mrs. Martin? Yeah. In the determination of what these projects would be, was it areas that were particularly affected during that?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question.
How did, how did you determine which projects you were going to allocate?
Oh, which projects? Well, one was, I was looking for smaller projects that we don't normally bond for and borrow for, for smaller dollar projects. I was looking for ones... ones that we could execute quickly. I was looking for ones that related to the Public Works Department, since those are, I wanted to have some kind of, not that we had to do that, but since that's where the funds came from. I mean, we could technically use these funds for anything at this point. And I also, particularly as relates to the Stevenson Fire Station, I was trying to address something that would be something we could act upon sooner that is needed. The generator there is in, is in need of, of upgrade and it's time, it's something that if we can address faster, it's better.
So the timeliness of this, the things that you have here that were needed, that was an important consideration because these, these projects would have in essence jumped over some other capital projects that were, you know, already.
Well, well, Stevenson was actually discussed in fiscal year 21, the current one. So I, the, the other two, quite frankly, they are, you know, they're in the smaller dollar amount range. So I mean, a lot of the other projects are much, you know, they're, they're higher dollar amounts. And again, looking for things that would fit with the, with what, in the, in the funds that are available.
Okay. Okay. So we're voting on?
Madam Chair?
Anybody else? Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more note. As discussed, this was unanimously passed through to council on LNA. There was some discussion in LNA that I do think is prudent. I did have one concern, and I will preface this by saying that I am comfortable moving these funds, and I think that is the appropriate action. But I did have one concern in that these past budget cycles and this upcoming budget cycle, we have been utilizing a large amount of our undesignated fund balance and we are heading towards the bottom of the range that our Board of Finance finds comfortable. We are still within that range, but we are heading towards a, a lower portion of that range than we've been in a long time. As such, I just wanted to make sure the first selectman had had the, these discussions with our finance director, with the Board of Finance, and he did indicate that actually those conversations already happened. And this exact conversation happened at the Board of Finance meeting as well, as to whether it was more prudent to replenish our undesignated fund balance with this money and bond out these small amounts over a period of time and spread out those payments, or pay them now and not get that extra money back into the undesignated fund balance. Based on the representations of this selectman, as to the advice of both our finance director and the unanimous advice of our finance, Board of Finance, it is more prudent to spend these funds now. We have, we do have some savings in that we do save on bonding costs associated with them, as well as it allows these projects to get done at a faster rate than it would bonding. And also the small amount being only $141,000, under $142,000 versus if this was a million dollars coming back from FEMA, we might be having a very different discussion. As such, I, like I said, I am comfortable. I just feel like it is something that was on my mind and prudent for the members of council to consider in their votes.
Okay. Any other discussion? So we're going on to vote on Resolution 21-60. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
This passes eight to zero. D, Resolution 21-61 to consider an act upon a resolution regarding Stevenson Fire Station Number Two Generator. Mr. O'Rourke?
I move to adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-61 regarding Stevenson Fire Station Number Two Generator, be it resolved that $65,000, $65,000 of available funds be committed and appropriated within the capital reserve fund for the Stevenson Fire Station Number Two Generator replacement project as included in fiscal year 21 adopted capital budget.
I need a second for this motion?
Second, Jason Mauer.
Okay, thank you. Going on to discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So I'll, I'll start by incorporating all my comments from the prior resolution. I'll just add that this, as, as you stated earlier, this was a project that was in the fiscal year 21 adopted budget. The funding source was, I believe, a TD at the time. That was the, last year, we did not budget any, we didn't, we, we weren't going to commit to any bonding, but I'm sure that, you know, that's, and we did not have, we did not want to put this now in capital reserve at the time. So again, this is a project that's a priority. So I ask that we move it forward.
Okay. Any other discussion? So all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, this passes eight to zero. Going on to Resolution 21-62 to consider an act upon a resolution regarding towable boom lift shared between Board of Education and the town. Do I hear a second?
Second.
If you need a formal motion, please.
Whole thing. I'm sorry, Mr. O'Rourke.
I move to adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-62 regarding towable boom lift shared between the Board of Education and town, be it resolved that $25,000 of available funds be committed and appropriated within the capital reserve fund for the purchase of a towable boom lift utilized by both the Monroe Public Schools and certain municipal departments as included in the fiscal year 22 approved capital budget.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Give me a second.
Second, Jen Aguilar.
I'm sorry, DeeDee seconded, fine. Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Again, we pretty much discussed this in the prior, prior resolutions. This is, this is currently in the fiscal year 22 approved capital budget, but it would allow us to move on it immediately. This is a replacement that is sorely needed for this piece of equipment that the current one, I think, is well, well beyond its useful life, if, if it's even usable. Used, used and typically stored at one of the schools, but also used by Public Works and on occasion Parks and Rec.
Any other discussion? So all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
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 Passes eight to zero. Going on to Resolution 21-63 to consider an act upon a resolution regarding roll-off truck retrofit for Department of Public Works.
To adopt the following resolution. Resolution number 21-63 regarding the roll-off truck retrofit for Public Works, be it resolved that $35,000 of available funds be committed and appropriated within the capital reserve fund for a roll-off truck retrofit as included in the fiscal year 22 approved capital budget.
Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Mauer, discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Again, included in the fiscal year 22 capital budget that you recently approved. It was one of the projects that was discussed, this Public Works to retrofit one of their vehicles at a lower cost and basically put new life into it without expending a larger amount for a full replacement.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Anybody?
Aye.
This passes eight to zero. On to G, Resolution 21-64 to consider an act upon a resolution regarding public health nurse job description. Mr. O'Rourke?
I, I move to adopt the following resolution. 21-64 resolve that the town council hereby approves the proposed revisions to the public health slash educator job description to be renamed public health nurse and authorizes the first selectman to implement as soon as practical.
Okay, thank you. Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have an upcoming retirement of, or part-time public health nurse who's been with us, the timing was with the prior Tremble Monroe Health District. Again, she's retiring, so we're utilizing the opportunity to prioritize. This is one of the job descriptions to look at first in our review. You'll see it's currently, as, as you know, currently entitled Public Health Nurse slash Educator. The, the public health education is really just one of many components of the duties of the public health nurse. So proposing to rename it Public Health Nurse. Most of this is simply cleanup and housekeeping language, provide, getting this job description up to our current, you know, current functions. Again, there's some language in here that seems to be holdovers from the former district as well, which we kind of cleaned up, you know, eliminated. The, the position, you'll probably note in the, in the red line, the job description currently says 10 hours per week. It is currently only budgeted at eight hours per week. It has only been budgeted at eight hours per week since circa 2017, when many departments reduced their budgets due to the, due to state funding uncertainty. And it was a recommendation at the time from the director to budget it at eight hours a week. So it's been that way ever since. However, we've added language there to reflect that there are additional hours that are regularly available based on grant funding. So although I, I guess what I wanted, the point I'm trying to make is there is no practical reduction in hours in this job description change. It is exactly the way it's been. And it is certainly not uncommon to, to get more than these hours through grants. So I think that's it. And obviously, it has been through the work of our HR director and our health director, I believe. It is on the, on the go-to meeting as well, if you have any questions.
Any other discussion? Okay. Voting on this motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Sorry, my mute was not working. Yes, aye.
Okay, this pass, passes eight to, Wesley H., Resolution 21-65 to consider an act upon a resolution regarding the Edith Wheeler Memorial Trust Policy Procedure Agreement. O'Rourke?
I move to, I move to adopt the following resolution. Number 21-65 resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, first electman of the town of Monroe and Linda Fracassini, Chairwoman of the Library Board of Trustees, are authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the town of Monroe and the Library Board of Trustees respectively, the Edith Wheeler Memorial Trust Policy and Procedure Agreement and any associated documents by and between the trustees of Edith S. Wheeler Trust.
Do I hear a second?
Jason Mauer, second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kellogg, discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I think everyone's aware, Edith Wheeler was certainly a very long time in our resident past, several years ago. She gave generously to many, many causes and many aspects of our town, including our library, which you all know is, is named in her honor. There was a, she left a 1992 trust agreement. And as part of that trust agreement, one of the aspects of it is that income that's derived from a portion of that trust is declared by the trustees of her trust and provided for use at our library. It is, there's an approval process that involves our Library Board of Trustees as well as the first selectman. Some time ago, this dates to prior to, prior to COVID, I was awed aware that the trustees had some longstanding concerns just in regards to the town's process relative to budgeting the funds received from the trust. And basically boiling down to making sure, or wanting to ensure, that the expenditures recommended by our board and approved by the first selectman were consistent with Mrs. Wheeler's intentions. So after considerable effort on both sides and some delays with COVID and, and kind of conversations going back and forth, I have been provided, the town attorney has provided to me a policy and procedure agreement that's been negotiated with the trustees. I've spoken to our Library Board Chairwoman, Linda Fracassini, who has informed me that the board is also in agreement. So we have before you a Edith Wheeler Memorial Trust Policy and Procedure Agreement that we feel is ripe for adoption, that will provide clarity in terms of the process procedure and hopefully make everyone comfortable so we can continue to move forward and continue to graciously accept the funds that Ms. Wheeler left for the town's library. And again, the town attorney has provided his, his letter of opinion as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Kind of chair?
Yes.
This was discussed a little bit more in detail in LNA. The two items were that, one, we are the proper body to authorize the Library Board Chairwoman to sign on behalf of the Library Board. It was indicated by our town attorney through our selectman that yes, we are indeed the proper body, that it is not through just a vote of the Library Board. And then the other aspect was just discussing as, to one section, how funding works for projects that go over multiple years, based off of the indications from our selectman, based on his conversations with our town attorney. I do feel that is proper, as well as did the LNA commission, the LNA committee who passed this unanimously.
Thank you. Any other discuss?
And just to, just to elaborate a little bit on, on Mr. Mauer's comments, certainly Library Board can certainly, you know, would, would indicate to the chair their consensus for her to proceed. However, in my discussion with the town attorney, as we are a home-rule charter town, and our charter provides that it is the council that has the sole authority to enter into agreements, it would be appropriate that the council also authorize, not just me, but also the chair of the Library Board. So where there's no, there is no question that all parties have authority to bind the town in this fashion.
Thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, we're voting on this resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes eight to zero. Second public participation. Anybody out there?
Public wishing to speak, don't forget to unmute yourself if you wish to do so.
You got eight forty-six. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.